Okay, we'll call the this evening's Planning Commission to order. The first item on the agenda this evening are the minutes from previous meetings.
Move for approval.
Moved by Hannah, seconded by Engelberger. Any additions, corrections, deletions? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion passes. Next on the item, excuse me, next on the agenda is the Council Representative Report. For those non-council members, the last month's items that included the tractor supply and the senior assisted living project that we looked at, both of those were approved at council. So, just to let you know that's what's going on. Yes, Matt?
Thanks, Scott. Wasn't there a detail with the sign that tractor supply or approved an additional signage or something like that? I thought I saw something about it. If not, maybe.
Not at this time.
No.
Alman Engelberger?
I think it was, it was talking about the landscape.
The trees.
Trees or whatever.
Sure.
Encouraged trees.
Yeah. Thinking about the sign.
Just curious.
Okay, moving on then, status of developments.
Couple of projects worth highlighting, and they may have been highlighted in the past, but as many of the members might have recognized, all these is under construction at this point, but the noteworthy item of improvement out there is a traffic signal. The traffic signal is likely going to be activated tomorrow, so that's, that'll be an improvement out in that district. The Prey of Homes was, the first weekend was held this week, this last weekend in Nordic Ridge. I'm told that it was, there was a good attendance in the Stoughton site as well as the other locations, so I'm excited to report that as well.
Sounds great. Any questions? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda then is a request by Tom Lamberson for site approval to construct a garage at 920 Nygaard Street.
Containing your packet of the materials related to this request, you'll recognize this is the request found on Nygaard Street for the daycare facility that's located there now. It does meet the setback and the zoning requirements of the district. If there's any questions, we'll certainly field those.
Questions of the commission? Alman Engelberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everything's in order, Rodney? As far as, no exceptions or anything?
It meets the minimum standards.
Okay. I guess I would make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Engelberger, seconded by Hannah.
Bartlett.
I'm sorry, Bartlett, sorry. Any additional questions, comments, concerns?
Just one thing, Rodney, is this visible from the road or no?
It will be. It's on the backside of the facility.
Setback highways.
As I recall, this, this is a little bit below the grade of the highway, but it is certainly visible from 51.
Okay, but how about from Nygaard?
Oh, you'll be able to see it from Nygaard as well.
Is this right next to the hotel?
There's a vacant lot in between the hotel and this facility.
This is where utilities went across somewhere in that area?
So the site is this location, the vacant lot we just mentioned is, is between the hotel, and this is the daycare facility. The utilities that you spoke of or mentioned are, were actually along the north property line, and actually not on this particular property.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, got a motion for approval. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item then is item number six, a request by Bruce Stein and James Lapp for extraterritorial jo, excuse me, extraterritorial jurisdictional approval for a land division at 333 State Highway 138 in the town of Rutland.
In your packet is this, the staff review letter and the materials related to this site. You'll recognize that our land division ordinance does allow for a maximum lot size to exceed two and a half acres in this situation, and that would be the request here. They're proposing to harvest off about five acre, well, five acres for this, this parcel of land to break off the, the homes and some additional land to accommodate the business that they plan to operate out of that location. Applicants are here if there's questions as well.
Questions of the commission? Alman Engelberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my only question or concern with this would be, once they divide this, is there going to be a request for more access off of 138? Or no?
I was told verbally, at least by the applicants, that there is no intention to have additional access points to the, to State Highway 138. They can confirm that, they're here.
We're sharing the driveway. Is it there already?
Because that, that's, as you know, a concern of the whole development out there in KPW right now, so. Thank you. Motion to approve.
A second.
Moved and seconded. Additional questions or comments? Seeing none on the motion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion passes. Brings us to item number eight, a request by Philip Knudsen. Oh, I'm sorry, number seven. Request by Tom Mattson for extraterritorial jurisdictional approval for a land division at 1494 Pleasant Hill Road in the town of Dunkirk.
Similar situation. It is on the east side of Pleasant Hill, Pleasant Hill Road. Again, trying to create a five acre parcel. You'll, you'll read the narrative from the town and the county. It does still allow them to have one additional split, even after this split would be, be obtained on this parcel. Again, it's more than the two and a half acres, so the resolution is written to allow it to occur if, if the finding is such by the city.
Alman Engelberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, no issues with the staff on this?
Again, you're just, you're just having to identify that it's greater than the two and a half acres and recognizing it would be a five acre, a five acre parcel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Engelberger, seconded by Hannah. Additional questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion passes. Now that brings us to item number eight, a request by Philip Knudsen for design review and approval of a new awning at 110 East Main Street.
The downtown design overlay district within the zoning code requires the Planning Commission action on items such as this. The packet also includes the, the fact that the Landmarks Commission did approve a COA or certificate of appropriateness for the, the proposed awning, and therefore is recommended for approval from us as well.
Questions of the commission?
Just a question, I wasn't able to look at it online. Is, is this the proposed here, or is this the picture you have up on the screen?
I think this one is the existing, sorry.
Yeah, it's just above, I think it shows it. There's the, there's the proposed.
That's the proposed, sorry. Yep, thank you.
Mr. Engelberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I don't have any problem with this, but it's, I'm not a designer, but I prefer the blue myself, but if they like green, I guess they like green. I think it's been approved by the Landmarks already.
It has.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Engelberger, seconded by Bartlett. Additional questions or comments? Seeing none on the motion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion passes. Brings us to item number nine, a request by Laura Vinnie for conditional use permit for approval to allow a group daycare at 320 Devorac Court. We do have a public hearing on this.
Yeah, this is for conditional use, to, to allow for the daycare center to be located at this location on the map for those at home or in the audience. Devorac Court, there's three parcels of land that are associated with this facility. You'll recognize the packet doesn't have a complete site plan, and the, so the site plan can't be acted on tonight, but the, the use could be as far as the conditional use for the, the daycare facility. One of the conditions that would become part of the, the approval in the future would be to consolidate the lots into one parcel and then have the expanded parking lot and stormwater management and stuff. So that site plan review would come back to you. They're really, at this point, just prepared to seek the conditional use to allow for the daycare facility at this site.
With that, I will declare the public hearing open. Don't have any registrants? Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none?
I'm Laura, but I have this question.
Okay.
The applicant's here.
So, if there are questions, are there any questions? Commissioner Bartlett?
Am I correct that you own the other, another daycare in town, the Learning Tree? Is that yours?
I own two, so.
Will this be closing down another one, or is this just making them large?
If you come to the.
Yeah, so currently, right now, I own the daycare at Fastenal in the Fastenal building, 1740 East Main Street. That one will be closing, because I just leased that. My lease is up in December. Then we own 1401 East Main Street also, and that's our kids' club. That's our school program for our school-aged children. It actually opened today for the summer, and we will maintain that building. We will not be closing that building.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions of the applicant? Any other, anyone else interested in speaking on this item? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Back to commission action. Alman Engelberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess a couple of questions, Rodney. Currently, this, this property is, is tax exempt? Is that correct?
I didn't look into the tax, tax status, but it likely was under the, under the previous tax-exempt operation and operated it and owned it.
Is that changing under this?
I believe it will.
Is that what the zoning has to do with, or no?
No, zoning will not drive the, the tax ability of it.
Is that, how can we get that answer from, who can we get that answer from whether it's?
Are you a tax-exempt entity?
I am.
It'll be taxed, right. It'll be taxed.
And is the, who owns the building currently?
I own it.
She's purchased it.
So you purchased it already?
Yeah, we bought it on the second purchase.
Okay, thank you. And I guess, Rodney, I was just looking at the letter here at the end, or Michael. It seems like there's a lot of open-ended things here.
Site plan issues.
Right, okay, but everything else on the CUP is okay as far as you guys are concerned?
As far as the use being converted into a daycare center, it certainly seems supportable at this location, given its previous use and the environment of the location. The zoning allows for this type of use as a conditional use in the district. I think the facility probably lends itself quite well to this type of use.
Okay, and when, when would that happen to come back to us for the, the SIP?
Well, it won't be an SIP, but a site plan approval.
Site plan approval.
And she's going to be preparing the plans for the additional parking and any stormwater management that would be necessary. I, I think they're working on that right now, so in the not-too-distant future, I'd anticipate seeing that come forward.
So there's going to be quite a bit of remodeling on the building, or, or no?
I don't know that there's many exterior alterations, but a lot of interior alterations.
I think on the exterior, that will be done, would be add parking, which we need to move in. And then a playground will be put in.
Okay, and, and, I had one other question I was going to ask, what was it? What, is there a ballpark time period when, when it may be open?
Is there a timeframe in which you're hoping to open?
It should be in there, December of this year.
Okay.
And within the packet, we did indicate that you're hoping to bring some of the site stuff back to us in July?
Yeah, it should be ready there. We just couldn't get that registered.
So I'd make a motion to approve the conditional use permit?
Second.
Moved by Engelberger, seconded by Hannah. Additional questions?
Just one question. Do you know about how many kids that the facility will end up serving?
It'll be about 120.
About 120 kids? Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Alman Engelberger?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, how many are you currently serving?
We have 40 in our, well, like 55 in our one building and about 40 in our school-age program.
So, will it be going up by 50, or?
It'll be about another 75 in that one building.
Okay, good.
Alman Bartlett?
Do you know how long this has been vacant, Rodney, by any chance?
I'm only, I believe it's probably through, is it that long even? I know it's at least four or five.
It's been four or five or six.
Okay, yeah.
Commissioner Hannah?
Thanks, Mr. Trul. So then the, the CSM will be part of that site plan? Correct. That needs to happen as far as? To, to do the exterior alterations, the consolidation of lots is appropriate. Right. For, for curiosity's sake, is there a reason why the previous building was functioning with the zero lot line, or however you want to state it? We updated our zoning regulations and allowances related to that in '09, so this was constructed well before that. Yeah, cool. Thank you. Sure.
Additional questions? Seeing none, we have a motion before us to approve the CUP. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion passes. Brings us to item number 10, a request by Kettle Park West LLC to approve a general development plan for Kettle Park West Commercial, Commercial Center, lots three, four, five, and seven. Rodney?
Just to begin as an overview, the development group is looking at trying to create a general development plan just for the parcels that are identified and shown on the screen here. Three, four, and five. Five is actually the one that is planned to house, at least a portion of it, to house McFarland State Bank. You've seen plans for a facility on this site, and you've seen plans for facilities, multiple facilities on Lot 7. So there, there's an interest in recognizing some of the challenges they've had working under the previous GDP plan, and most notably is some of the shared parking and setbacks from the shared parking. They, they list them in their, their request, and the applicant can talk about those a little bit more as, as we move forward tonight.
Thank you, Rodney. With that, I'll declare the public hearing open. Are there any registrants that wish to address us on this matter? Dennis?
Dennis Steinkrauss for Development Group. Basically, we're here to, to answer questions that you have. I mean, I could have, we could walk you through, you know, some things if that's what you want, but typically, we're, we're trying to do this because of the, the GDP that was adopted was based on the Big Box Ordinance, and as we tried to develop these smaller lots, you've seen us have problems with setbacks and some sidewalk whiffs and things like that, and if we just would amend that GDP, we won't really need any, any exceptions, you know, going forward with this. The other thing we've done is, is collectively, all those lots have the, if we build them all out with all those buildings, we'd have the, the same square foot that's in the original plan as far as those lots are concerned. There's more buildings on Lot 7, but overall, with all the lots, we have the same square foot of potential commercial retail space.
Commissioner, questions of Mr. Steinkrauss?
Yeah, thanks, Dennis. If you could just kind of, I know you don't have specific businesses, just kind of walk through some of the uses, just so we can understand how parking might, might operate. I know we talked about that on Lot 7, on, you know, this might be, how some of the overflow could come together and how that makes sense.
Well, what we, what we've done is we've looked at the ordinance and the uses, and what we're trying to do is create averages for the different uses and then look at the peak times, and that's how our, our parking chart has put together, and what, what we're saying is, we really need to look at the whole parcel and not just independent sections of that, because overall, it, it seems to balance really well. I mean, there's, there's, well, you know Dunkin' Donuts is coming on part of that. Well, a lot of our business is just morning business, although they do, do things into the afternoon. We've, we've got just some strictly retail in, in 72 building. AT&amp;T is coming in there as well as Great Clips. We're, we've got another restaurant planned for an end cap in that building, and can't really announce that quite yet. We don't have all the paperwork signed, but we're 90% there. And then we're looking at the corner, the southeast corner of that as, as being a standalone restaurant that would, that would be more of a afternoon dinner-type restaurant, so with, with the other ones being more early morning, morning and lunch things, on this one, we'll kind of take over from mid-afternoon to, to dinner.
Commissioner, Alman Bartlett?
Along the same path, can I, can you go over the pedestrian and bicycle access? No, it said you relied primarily on a private street, north and south, and you would be building a sidewalk on the east side. Will any of that change, or that sidewalk and all the access be the same pedestrian?
Yeah, that's all the same. We haven't changed that, and I think all that sidewalk's in, right, Rodney?
Well, I don't think it's in on the, on the full stretch of this east side at this point. Obviously, obviously, the path along the outer edge, the shared-use path is along the perimeter.
Right.
There is the sidewalk that does come into the Walmart facility. As this gets developed, that's when the sidewalk section will run along the east side of Kettle Parkway. I don't believe all that's in yet.
Yeah, all that sidewalk would be planned to come in at, at the construction of the And all connected to the Jackson Street 51 intersection where the lights are going to be to allow people to get through there.
Commissioner Hannah?
Yeah, thanks, Alman Trul. I certainly appreciate your work, and you're, and you're thinking on this, because, you know, I think ideally, I'd hate to see more and more parking to take away from retail, you know, space and, and to plan it efficiently. Makes logical sense. So just understanding, have a good understanding of seven, as far as like five and four go, like the bank site, you know, the bank obviously is nine to five. Any idea or plans that you guys are, say, marketing for some of these other spots?
General retail type right now, but we, because we increased the square feet on Lot 7, the square feet on those two lots have actually come down, so the, so the parking need there should correspondingly come down. I can't say there won't be a restaurant up there, but right now, it doesn't, we're not, we're not really seeing like a sit-down restaurant or anything there. You know, it might, might get a sub shop or, or a, you know, fast casual, something potentially, but we, we don't see, we don't see a standalone-type restaurant there. Although in the long run, it's, it's open for Lot 3, which, which sits on top and overlooks the kettle area there, so. But that, that lot would have plenty of room to park.
Sure, and then Lot 4, looks like there's, looking like some larger type of retail with a loading dock and, you know, it's just a general layout right now, right?
It is, and we're actually working with a group that, that's specifying a building about that size. I think it's about 25,000 to 30,000 square feet. And then on the east side of that lot, we, we have, we have two spots as kind of placeholders. Realistically, there's probably only going to be one more building over on that side. We just don't know what, where it will go exactly right now. What we try to do, build in some flexibility here, so when we come in with final plans, we're not trying to create any situations that we need any bearings from or anything.
Any additional questions for Dennis? Alman Engelberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dennis, I, I just wanted to ask you about, I had a council member ask me, they had some safety concerns with regard to, I guess it would be just about all of the lots except for three, because three, it looks like only has one building on it, but the ones with multiple buildings on it, the concern was interior walkways or anything, rather than parking somewhere and walking through the parking lot to get from one building to the other. Are there walkways or anything like that within those lots between the buildings? That was a concern raised by one of the council members. I just wanted to bring that forward.
Is there ways to go from island to island?
Like, for instance, in the Walmart parking lot, there's big walkways from the parking lot into the, to the entryway.
Right now, we don't have any plan, anything planned on Lot 7. I know that what we've seen preliminarily for the banks parcel would have a pretty nice sidewalk connection for some pedestrian, for staff to walk up to their building, but there's, right now on seven at least, we don't have that interconnectivity.
You have the perimeter, you have the perimeter sidewalk that will be on the south side of Kettle Park, or this drive entrance, and then it does run north to south along the edge, and then you have the shared-use path around the perimeter, but interconnectivity between the, the actual buildings, there isn't anything built into this.
And I think if, if, if we move forward with this amendment for these new parking counts, and we find these users for seven, if there is a space, and we don't have to completely load this up, and we can, we can afford to lose four stalls, you know, that might be something we can explore, bumping out an island to have a five-to-seven-foot sidewalk that at least goes through a portion of those internal islands. I think we'd be open to that.
Yeah, it was just a concern raised by one of the council members, and I, I guess I'll ask staff if there's any, any concern there with that type of an issue, safety-wise?
Well, again, as you review each of these site plans, that's really going to afford you the opportunity, I think they're hearing the concern that's being raised. Again, the inner connectivity of the uses may or may not be.
Right.
You know, if you're going from Dunkin' Donuts, you might not be going to
Right.
Another restaurant next door. I, I don't know, but you might have not competing.
Depends on who you are, I guess.
Half the family goes over here and half, I don't know.
Any additional questions for either Dennis or staff? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain additional questions. Commissioner Hannah?
Yeah, thanks, Alman Trul. Rodney, if you just want to maybe go through some of these exemptions and exceptions, just so we're clear, you know, like the pavement setback and what that specifically means, is it, you know, because of the shared uses, you know, and the zero, it's kind of zero setback from five and all those different things, if you just want to kind of, maybe use examples on the, on the plan of what that means? I certainly can, related to the shared uses, or the shared parking, that's a, that's an easy one to talk about. The original GDP anticipated this being one parcel, one, and we all anticipated it was going to be a bank. The size of the bank and the, the layout there is, is changing. This may very well become two parcels, and it, it seems logical to have a shared-use parking in this configuration. Under the current regulations, you would need to have a pavement setback of five feet off of either side of the property line. That, that couldn't be accomplished under the, the current standards. That's an example. The size of the tree islands that are talked about, you know, when you look at the parking lot size of, of a large retailer, you, you may see a need to have larger tree islands, and so there, there's some of, some language in there that discusses that related to the frequency and the size of those islands is located in here. Let me, let me think about other ones that make, make it easy to talk about. Those are really two. Those are the two. Yeah, the other ones were kind of just stating the fact that it's not large element. Kevin, do you see anything other particular aspects that you'd highlight?
The, the tree exhibit that we provided, if you go to the next page, one thing that has been catching us up at Plan Commission and asking for an exception on is, this is a concept exhibit for Lot 5, and every 50 feet along a public right-of-way, we've been asked to place some type of large deciduous tree. For this example, McFarland is proposing some type of nice architectural feature on that corner, so why not, let's, let's open it up a little bit and allow for 100, 150 feet between trees. It's, it's, you know, great marketing for them, also a good entrance point for the Kettle Park West development, and it doesn't quite make sense to drop a, a large tree right in front of that, that architectural element, so that was another one. We did include on this list to take building sidewalks that are, we were required to have them be 10-foot wide, which seems a little bit more common for a Walmart. We We pulled that down to five foot minimum so that, you know, we're just not paving the entire lot with a ten foot sidewalk.
These are the buildings.
We've asked for that exemption quite a bit, so trying to clean that up. Not changing anything really related to lighting or plant species, trying, we're not trying to get away from the native species that we were, that we were working with before, so we're still including that. Rodney touched on a little bit smaller landscape islands. And we talked about parking briefly as well. I think we're, I mean, I think we've hit most of them. Ultimately, the end goal for making this recent middle was allowing that lot split for lot five because we have that coming up. And then also lot seven, the original GDP only called for a maximum of three buildings and we're proposing five, or we'd like to see five, some, five there someday. So while we were making that amendment to the GDP, let's clean some other things up. And, you know, we, I can't promise that we'll hit every single thing and there won't be something that might come up aesthetically on a building, but I think this is going to limit a lot of those exceptions that we've been requesting.
Commissioner Hanna?
Thanks. I think, I think they're logical and reasonable requests for this development. Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barman. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Kirshman?
Your comment about the five foot sidewalks where, where there's a large overhanging vehicle on a five foot sidewalk where adjacent to a parking area, five feet isn't enough.
Agreed. And I think we would keep that to seven in those, in those certain places like we've been doing for these developments that are going forward. Rodney, if you could maybe go back to that tree exhibit, there was one on the south side of the new McFarland building that very few pedestrians will be walking along the south side of that building, so does a ten foot sidewalk there make sense? I would say no. But definitely a seven in front of that building where that thick and edge sidewalk, yeah, we would, we would agree with that. We always want to be conscious of any person in a wheelchair or just giving people more space too, but ten just seems a little excessive.
Commissioner Hanna?
Yeah, thanks Alderman Trul. I think just, just to clarify, I mean, we'll, we'll still be able to see the site plans on, on all these specific sites, you know, the ones that we haven't already seen. So I think we'll have our opportunity to, you know, make those determinations, say, you know, at the entryway of a building or things like that. But I think for a general guideline is kind of what you're looking for so that you're not getting hung up in the design process. You know, I got to really make this work. I think it gives you more flexibility to prepare the best plan that you think forward without having to, you know, maybe feel limited by creating, you know, a different plan, but maybe, you know, offer more flexibility for you guys, which I completely understand. And, you know, for that other potential building, we don't even see any walkways right now, so there's no way to really gauge that. So I, I get it, and I think, you know, it's a good point to, to bring up, Todd, and I think it's something that, you know, now that it's, you know, before us that we look at this, you know, closer when we do get more specific, but at this point, I think it allows you guys more flexibility, so.
Additional questions or comments? Alderman Engelberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Rodney and Michael, everything's in order, you feel, with, these are a lot of changes to the plan?
Yep.
I guess my question would be, you know, there's a lot of changes for this because it's this development and I think Dennis explained it early on that rather than, because of some of the issues with the big box ordinance and that kind of stuff. But I just want to make sure this doesn't all of a sudden going to be precedent-setting for other types of developments outside of this development where we could get ourselves in trouble with something. You see any problems with that?
No, the GDP process affords the opportunity to really evaluate a site on a larger basis. Obviously, you looked at the, the transportation, the pedestrian routes in and around these facilities, it's more of a global situation.
Which I wasn't real happy with, as you know.
I'm sorry?
Which I wasn't very happy with, as you know, but
Understood.
That's a different story.
But this zoning process does allow you, afford you the opportunity to consider this type of process. If you feel the points that were raised are, are logical for, I don't see them as exceptions. There really are, the GDP SIP process that this district allows, that additional ability to scrutinize, you know, the sidewalk width needs to be ten for some other reason, even after, after we would reduce it in this down to a five, you know, that's something you discuss and, you know, negotiate and talk through as part of the site plan approval. But I think there's some fairly legitimate concerns raised about the distance from a shared parking. Some of them seem fairly straightforward. I don't think they're trying to deviate from the standards to change the character of what the overall development plan was for this. As you recall, most of these were multiple building sites all along, but there wasn't as much consideration about a potential splitting of a lot into separate ownership, which would have required you to have separate distances from the, the parking areas, so.
Is there, is there a resolution for this or no?
There is not, and it'll be an ordinance actually. If the, the planning commission moves it out of here, one would be drafted and that would be what's presented to the council.
So we're basically approving changes to the current plan, is that correct?
You're, you would be adopting actually the revised GDP that they've submitted.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be put together in ordinance format with the city attorney. We've been working with them basically on it already.
And when would that come back?
It wouldn't have to come back to here, it'd come to probably two weeks from tomorrow.
Okay.
Would be likely when the council would see it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanna?
Thanks Alderman Trul. Yeah, I guess with, you know, hearing some of our, our comments about, you know, site safety and, and, you know, accepting that exemption, yeah, I, I think it overall will make it safer because you don't have to have multiple entries into a site and with a separation and setback and things like that, but just being aware of, you know, using islands and walkways and delineated paths is, I think, just the number one concern. Overall, I think it's, it makes for a better site and ultimately, I think what everybody wants is the best plan going forward. So I think that allows for you guys to create that and present what you think is the best plan and then we can take a look at it.
Alderman Engelberger?
Yeah, just one other question with regard to the, the first map you had up there that showed the lots themselves Rodney?
Yeah.
So the only lots that aren't included in here are the, the Walmart site and then the KP, or the QuikTrip site, is that correct? And this, but this is the rest of the phase one lots?
Correct. Recall, north of Jackson Street is your, the hotel and the senior, that wasn't part of the original GDP anyhow.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, I have a motion then by Hannah, seconded by Barman, to approve the revised GDP. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, nay? Motion passes. Thank you. Just item number eleven, request by JST Professional Services for approval of a condominium plat at Kettle Park West Commercial Center, Lot Seven. Rodney, you have a bright background?
We've actually been seeing pieces of this in, in SIP submittals along the way because there's been separate approvals for at least two, two different locations on this parcel. So their interest is to create a condominium plat for lot seven that would create five buildable parcels. Again, they're all part of one larger parcel, but they're part of a condominium plat. We've already seen and acted on approval for the Dunkin' Donuts as well as this multi-tenant facility on this location. So you, you can see the configuration of the lots that are being proposed. Again, they're still part of one larger parcel, but the condominium plat identifies areas of responsibility.
With that, I'll declare the public hearing open. Are there any registrants on this item? Anyone wish to speak? Dennis?
Well, again, on this lot seven, we felt that a condominium situation would be the way to go because there's so much common space with the parking out there that we didn't really want to sell off pieces of land, but we're doing like building envelopes and that, that allows for a transfer of title to basically the buildings while keeping all the parking and sidewalks and everything else, common space which is shared by all the tenant. So in addition to the condominium plat, we also have condominium declaration that, that tells how all the, all the maintenance and replacement costs and that are shared with the five owners that are out there.
Questions of Dennis? Alderman Burley?
Is this a typical arrangement for this type of development?
Yes, yes. I mean, well, I mean, sometimes somebody will own all of the buildings, but typically that's not necessarily our interest here. So if we can, you know, sell pads and let somebody else, you know, do a building and own it, we're fine with that. And that just allows us to, to, to do the development the way we want it and then we just have a different owner for the, for the uses that are there.
Additional questions? Dennis?
Now, from my understanding, and again, I'm relatively new to the commission, so I haven't sat in on a lot of the earlier discussions, but are, essentially the footprints of all these five buildings is already determined or there's still some design that's going to occur down the road when you start working with specific?
Yeah, there'll, there'll still be some, you'll still get SIPs submitted once the buildings are.
But in terms of the building footprints themselves, I'm just wondering, I guess my question is related in this, this condominium association plan, how much flexibility each of these individual owners with, or individuals within the condominium partnership are going to have with their footprint when they come in later and maybe have a little bit different idea for their building?
Well, that'll work out fine because if you, if you look how this is divided, we're really, it's like parcelling off an area of land, not, not a building itself. So, so they'll be able to work within that building envelope and create, create their actual building.
As long as they stay within the envelope?
As long as they stay in there and with certain size limitation. I mean, obviously some of those parcels aren't, you know, you're not going to get a twenty thousand square foot building on it.
Correct.
So they're going to have to work in, you know, within the other rules and regulations, but they, but we're, we're not trying to designate an exact building at this point.
Sure. I guess what I was getting at is if, if someone came in and had a really cool building design, same square footage, but had a different, you know,
Yeah.
Different layout that didn't necessarily fit exactly within the envelopes that you created within the association plan, how does that, how does the plan accommodate for that? Do you have to come back in and then make changes to the association footprints that are laid out?
No, we'll, we'll have, I guess the only time that I think we'd have to come back in is if we tried to exceed the total square foot of retail space within the whole lot. Otherwise, what this does is gives us flexibility up to that spot. And it also, us as a developer, we have to, we have to prove what the building might look like. And then you as a planning commission, you'll get that back by the SIP process and then you'll have to approve that also.
Just to highlight, maybe I can just expand, there are some underground utilities that are installed anticipating these lot lines essentially being configured in such a manner as shown. There's some underground stormwater management facilities, so there are some things that they'll have to work around. In addition, you having site plan approval authority of individual pad sites, if you will, we're going to be watching for inner circulation, you know, how, how does that work? Putting, for example, putting seven one, you know, right along this edge may not work well for transportation purposes, but that still is an opportunity for us to review that particular development plan for that site.
Commissioner Kirshman?
Yeah, I just, I mean, maybe a better question is what if seven one and seven five wanted to be a larger building over that one across the line? I guess that's maybe where he was going with that. And how are you going to handle that? Or how is that handled?
Well, because seven two and seven four are being built, I think we'll have some restrictions as to how big those other buildings could get.
Yeah.
And it just physically is not going to fit, fit on there. And I guess that, I mean, that's sort of a risk we take, but we, we feel with the, with the five lots there that we have more than adequate space for different types of usage that, that might come to this corner. We'll have to balance that, I mean.
Alderman Engelberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few questions. Dennis, do you have named tenants for these buildings yet or no?
We, we do on, on the seven two building, we, we have an AT&T office or a retail facility going in there, and we also have a Great Clips. We're also ninety percent of the way of, of signing on end cap for that building of four thousand square feet, which will be some type of a restaurant facility. And then seven four is a kitty corner from that, the southwest corner of that lot, and we've already announced that Dunkin' Donuts is taking half of that building, four thousand square feet. And we have a suite or two suites behind that that could also be retail or food, and we've got some interest from food on that, fast casual type food.
How many units are in building seven two? Or don't you know yet?
Well, I think with the two that are committed and the restaurant.
Up to seven?
Three more, that's maybe, maybe small. There's, there's two thousand square feet left in that building, so you could get possibly three small tenants or two medium or one, two thousand square foot.
How about one, three and five, are they multi-tenant buildings also or no?
Well, what we're looking for right now for one is, that's, that's the building that's least designed, I guess, at this point. We really don't have anybody interested in that right now. So we just basically have a square footage designated there. And the three building, we really see that as not a, not a multi-tenant building, it'll be one tenant, probably a restaurant.
Okay.
Got interest in, in that.
You got enough parking there for that, for a restaurant there?
Yes, just because the other, the other, the other two are going to be more early morning and, and lunch type venues and the corner would be more of a lunch and dinner place, so.
Okay, how about five?
Five is more or less a placeholder right now too.
Okay.
Be a small standalone building.
Okay. Commissioner Hanna?
Thanks Alderman Trul. As far as the, what would be the timing of the infiltration system?
It's in.
Is this lot, it's in?
Yeah, the entire system is in.
Yeah, so you, so that, I mean, that building envelope's pretty much locked in there. I mean, you're not digging that up or moving it as far as seven five goes, right?
No, no, the utilities, both the stormwater underground facility and the sewer and water that's coming into the lot are all in and, yeah, we're not moving those. So, so the general location of those buildings is, is not real flexible right now.
Everything's pretty much improved up to that, those points.
Right.
It'd be a matter of feet here and there.
We, we could go a little bigger, a little smaller on the buildings, but they, they can't move drastically.
Yeah, and so parking's pretty much
Yeah.
Some flexibility, but not a whole lot.
Right.
Yeah.
If anything, if, depending on the uses, we could eliminate, we could potentially eliminate some of that parking.
Or the turnaround or the drive-around in seven one or whatever.
Yeah, that kind of thing, sure.
Any other questions for Dennis? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What would the commission like to do? Commissioner Hanna?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder, Alderman Engelberger. Additional discussion? Alderman Engelberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess the questions I would have would be for Rodney and Michael, everything look in order according to our ordinances and state law?
I think it meets the condominium plat standards, yes.
Okay. And then the other question I would have And then the other question I would have is by doing this, have we looked into or has the attorney looked into any effects on our developers' agreement or TIF agreements?
I think I can speak to the agreements to indicate that the valuation of improvements was what was really of utmost concern in the development agreement. And as you recall, Walmart, QuickTrip, and two other buildings were going to meet the valuation requirement for the debt service on that.
Yeah, I guess my question is more in terms of, you know, change of ownership at a point where it becomes a condominium. Does that have any bearing on our developers' agreement?
Well, we have a letter of credit-backed development agreement with the developer. So if those things are not being met, I mean, I can bounce it off the attorney, but I really don't believe that there's any incremental.
I just want to make sure we're in good shape there, not jeopardizing something by doing this.
Dennis?
Actually, we've been watching the increments being created and everything pretty closely because it has a lot to do with our letter of credits that are out there. And the four buildings that were mentioned had a total of $18,111,000 of increment would pay off the loan for the TIF. And right now, if you look at your tax roll and increment that's out there, it's about, it's $18,700 and some, somewhere in there. So we've already exceeded that with what was built and on the ground as of December 31 of last year. So anything new that's going on up there is going to be added increment that allow money to flow back quicker, or you can take on different projects with that. But I think it, I think it's, I think it's very encouraging to see that we've got two more buildings at least coming out here. We've got the hotel that's going to be starting around August 1st, and we've got the senior center that'll follow somewhere close to that. And just with those buildings, we're probably going to be pretty close to another $18 million of increment created out there.
Commissioner Hannah?
Sure, thanks, Alderman-Persimtrill. I guess, specific to Site 7, once the plans come back, just kind of referencing the last item, just inter-site connectivity would be encouraged.
Sure. We'll definitely look at that and see what we can do with maybe a little bit more walkability there. At one time, we were using like the walks in front of the buildings and maybe some of the islands, and maybe make that a little bit more prominent so people can get through there. But I think we can figure out a safe way to get people to the exterior walks of the building.
Sure, that'd be great.
Still get people to the stores.
Aldman-Angelberger?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, again, I just, I'm not concerned with the increment. I know there's plenty of increment there for this. But I just want to make sure that the attorney checks it out and makes sure that we're not in any trouble with our agreement by doing a change with the condo document.
Turnover, we'll discuss it.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we have a motion before us then by Hannah, seconded by Engelberger, to approve the condominium plat for KPW Commercial Center, Lot 7. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
No, nay? Motion passes. Brings us to item number 12, a request by Dennis and Amy Kittleson for approval of a landscaping plan at 315 East Main Street.
The commission will recall that this was part of the movement to demolish the facility the commission had requested returning with a landscaping plan. What's contained in your packet is what was submitted. The applicants are here, if you have, or were here, yep, they're here, if you have questions.
Are there questions of the applicant? Are there questions of staff? Is there, Commissioner Hannah?
Make a motion for approval.
Moved by Hannah, is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Seconded by Kirchma. Discussion. I would note that we did get, Peggy Birigan did register in opposition. There really isn't an opportunity to speak necessarily. Discussion. Commissioner Barman?
As, thank you. I was not on the commission when this first came before the commission. In fact, I was in the audience at the time because I was presenting a different project. But I'm concerned that this particular site plan, one, is not detailed. It also does not, it's not anywhere close to what was in the original concept plans. But my biggest concern is that I don't think this meets the conditions that were set in terms of justifying removal of a historic building from the district, from the historic district. Because as was laid out, it's supposed to improve the aesthetic of the district, of the downtown, and be sound site design, sound economic revitalization. I don't see where this particular site plan comes even close to any of those issues.
Aldman-Berle?
Thank you, I agree with that. The landscaping plan is not complete to me. Just the tree and the flower beds doesn't really tell me much. And I think this parcel is zoned for commercial business, so I don't see how we're putting a private public park on this. I think if we need to, we need to define what that is, and then, I don't know if that's done by conditional use or what, but I don't think it meets the purpose of the commercial zoning that we have on this. So I think we're going against our zoning ordinances and our comprehensive plan. I think if we're going to allow a park on this, we need to change both of those and do it the right way. Thank you.
Aldman-Angelberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to vote no on this, and I would encourage all of the commissioners to vote no on this for several reasons, many of them that I stated in previous meetings. This, I don't believe that the owners have met the procedure, for one thing, as far as the plan and discussion of or what the ordinance calls for in details that we need to see. I don't believe it fits in with our comprehensive plan. We've never had even a discussion about whether a private public space is even warranted within our city limits. The other thing I just wanted to bring to the attention of the commission is if this were to be approved tonight, I believe it would be precedent-setting in that the Planning Commission would be basically creating a new class of classification within our comprehensive plan. We've never even talked about this with regard to our planning or, so in other words, I feel that this body would be creating policy, which this body is not, that's not in their purview to do. This body is to approve and deny things based on our zoning codes. And so I'm going to vote no on this.
Just a point of information, again, as a follow-up. This previously came before us. It was adopted in April. Therefore, be it resolved by the City of Stoughton Planning Commission, that the application for the project approval to demolish the structure at 305-315 East Main Street is approved contingent upon the applicant bringing a detailed landscape plan back to the Plan Commission for approval. So just as a point of order, the matter before us really is approving a detailed landscape plan, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And as I said, I don't believe they've complied with that procedure. And also, by, like I say, by approving this, the commission would be doing something outside of their purview as a non-elected commission, basically creating a situation that we don't have and have never talked about.
Commissioner Hannah?
Thanks, Alderman-Persimtrill. So I guess a few questions. One, the demolition's already been approved, and we're just basically finalizing what it's going to turn into. And then I think the second for clarification is that it's a private property, so there is no, I mean, there's no, I feel like you really can't call it public because the city doesn't own it. It's a private ownership. So it is a private park or private property. So I feel like, you know, the statement of a private public and creating, if that's the reference of a new zoning class, it's not, not what it is. You know, it might be used by many different types of people, but it is a privately owned parcel. I guess I'll end my comments at that.
Aldman-Berle?
Along with that, to approve this, I don't, this isn't a detailed site plan to me. It doesn't tell us much at all. And it doesn't meet the conditions for a commercially zoned property to me. This isn't that. And I was here at the last, when this was approved, and public-private park was used often to describe what this was. I don't know what that is. It's not really defined. I don't know that we have private parks defined in our zoning ordinances either. I haven't seen anything. Do you know, Rodney, do we have any type of private or public-private park?
No, but I also don't know that, I don't think our regulations restrict people from opening up their property to use, have visitors, you know, on their property.
Would a commercially zoned property allow for that? I don't, to me, it doesn't.
Planning Commission, I'm just basing it on the finding that they made it there at a previous meeting, is that it would be consistent.
Commissioner Kirchma?
Can a commercial property tear down an existing building and landscape and leave no building and landscape in our current zoning?
I think they can. I think there's oftentimes anticipation of something else that's going to redevelop at some point, even if there isn't an imminent plan. I think there would be a belief that that might be very likely to happen.
And if I may continue, that new building, whatever that future building would be, would have to meet the local landmark design standards, correct?
It would have to meet whatever applicable codes are in place at the time of development.
Which currently, right now, there is a landmark review of those for architectural, correct?
There is not. This would not, this is not, if this building's gone, there isn't an architectural review of a new structure there. There's a downtown overlay district of which the Planning Commission reviews. Now, that's not to say the Landmarks Commission doesn't have an interest in trying to have, and the community of having buildings and projects downtown follow some architectural design criteria. And there's even a landmarks design guideline that I think any future building applicant would be encouraged to utilize in their design.
Commissioner Barman?
Excuse me, thank you. I want to comment a couple of things. One is that this is not a typical commercial parcel. I mean, it is within the historic commercial district, and so there's separate guidelines that come into play, particularly as it relates to demolition. So we can't use the analogy that if another commercial building was torn down somewhere else in the municipality, would they be required to put a park there or to have landscape? Guidelines like this, this is a different kind of case because they ask for a demolition permit of a historic structure or structures that's contributing to the historic district, and there are specific criteria in terms of how demolition and replacement by this is going to be in the best interest of the community. And I think it sets a dangerous precedence. I mean, personally, I wouldn't have voted to approve the demolition, but I wasn't on the commission at that time. So I understand that at this point in time, we're only here to approve this particular site plan. But I think to avoid even making this precedent even worse in the sense of really encouraging demolition by neglect, and that's what this is going to do. It's going to allow other property owners within the historic commercial district let their buildings go to the point that they become unsafe, or they become a situation where they say that, or they could make a similar kind of argument, or attempt to make a similar kind of argument and say that if I take this building down, it actually improves the aesthetic and the economic vitality of the district, which if the building was maintained, you would not be able to make that argument. And so I think it's very important to be very rigorous as a commission. When we're evaluating this site plan, it needs to be a significant site plan that warrants removal of a building. And if you look at the original concept plan, I might see where someone could make the argument that that kind of amenity use space, and we can get into all kinds of issues whether or not a private park is going to create other kinds of problems. But this clearly is not an aesthetic improvement, in my opinion. It's not detailed enough. I don't see where this is going to improve economic vitality of the district. There's just all kinds of problems. And so for me, I would need, even down the road, if this is denied and they come back with another plan, I'm going to expect a significant landscape investment. Otherwise, I'm going to assume that this was an effort to demolish by neglect and come back with a grass lot.
Commissioner Kirchma?
First of all, I don't see how the current building is adding to vitality. It's falling apart, terrible building. Second, Mr. Kittleson bought the building after it sat vacant for how many years? So, you know, and so it's not demolition by neglect, it's, the building's falling down right now. So it's not adding anything to the downtown right now. It's in terrible condition.
Commissioner Hannah, then Commissioner Bartlet?
Thanks, Alderman-Persimtrill. So I guess maybe an open-ended question to the commission is if, you know, it sounds like, you know, there's a sense that this plan doesn't have a whole lot of support. I would ask for ideas as to what you'd like to see that, you know, could be developed or changed or edited to this plan. And then maybe a question for Rodney. If a more significant plan came back as far as landscaping goes, is there a timeline that would be applied to this for construction? Would it be able to be, you know, installed in phases? You know, what, I guess, what are the guidelines for site development after demolition?
I think that's something the commission would really have at their disposal. I mean, you're reviewing it as part of the approval of the demolition. So I think the commission has some latitude. If it's a phased approach, if that's something the commission felt comfortable with, that might be acceptable.
Yeah, if I could continue. So typically, in a demolition permit, what is the typical process as far as future site planning after demolition? Is this an exception to that process already that we're asking for detailed development plan of a site?
I'll give you, I don't know that there are any examples of downtown buildings that we can speak to where there was an imminent plan. The Milfab site is going to be demoed, or that's the plan. But there is not an approved plan for redevelopment. There's a conceptual layout, but there isn't a timeline that's been associated with that. That's completely, a lot different because it's not part of the downtown design district. So there's different criteria related to that. So it's hard to draw an analogy to a specific demolition project. Many of the demolition projects that we've seen, something that's soon to go up, Kaiser Building went down, they're building annul these, you know, almost immediately. That's probably more of the norm.
Thank you. I guess one site that comes to mind is another RDA site. I believe it's referenced as a marathon site. And that was demoed and then basically seeded, right, in anticipation of something happening, which is on Main Street, not necessarily in the overlay district. But that was, you know, approved in that form, right? Correct.
Aldman-Berle?
Thank you. Rodney, can you explain to me how demolition permits work when it was submitted by the previous owner? Is that transferred with ownership of the property?
That's how we understood it.
Is that allowed? Is that? Is that?
That's what our city attorney said. It was an active permit that was able to be continued.
And I guess personally in response to Commissioner Hanna, I'd like to see at least a landmark committee do an evaluation on the building and look at future commercial uses of that property, rather than leaving it as a private park or whatever for however long. Marathon site, I know they have redeveloped and they are actively pursuing. I think they have someone lined up, I thought, or hopefully, pretty soon. So I think that's a different case to me, but I don't think this meets commercial use. And I'd like to see some more evaluation done on the historic value of the, of the property.
Commissioner Kirschman.
If there was value, it had sat vacant for six years. I mean, that's, it was for sale and vacant for that long, so it's not commercially viable.
From my understanding, what I believe is really, again, at this point, what really is before us is whether or not we have a, and a site plan that, that we as a commissioner are willing to accept. Again, I think from standpoint of previous action and, and movement forward, I, I might have, someone could challenge me on that, but that's what I believe in terms of how this is posted and what's, what's before us. So, again, I think there's, there's a lot of good comments that are being made here, I think, but that's, to some extent, I guess I would throw it back to Commissioner Hanna's comments about what would you like to see, what, you know, in terms of being able to give the applicant some choices, or again, to be able to bring something back before us that we could accept as a landscape plan. But, again, Commissioner Barnum.
Well, and again, I know that that's what's before us is, is approval of a site plan, not really to discuss demolition. Whether I agree with that or not, I understand that that's our role. And so for me, considering that the criteria that was applied to, and I think still needs to be maintained and continue to be applied to this particular site plan, is whether it improves the economic vitality of the district and the properties around it. And it's not just, I think we have to, what I'm going to expect to see is going to be a plan that shows me and has some rationale associated with it, not just a picture of a tree and a, and a couple annual beds, but some sort of case made that the particular design is going to stimulate activity, whether it be improved pedestrian traffic along. All the, all the arguments that were made when this particular commission approved the demolition plan, all the arguments that were made about how this will add to the vitality of adjacent properties, it will improve pedestrian traffic, all things that I challenged at the time as a citizen. But that's, that was the criteria that was applied when they approved the demolition waiting for a site plan. So if another site plan comes before this commission, that's the kind of, that's what I'm going to need to see. But I would also, and again, it's not our role, but I would put out there that I would encourage the property owner to at least reconsider demolition, just as a public record. Because when you talk about economic feasibility, economic feasibility and being able to pencil out a project depends a lot on what kind of price you're putting on the property as you attempt to sell it. It's going to cost money to demolish that building. So if you would just make that property available for free, have an RFP where you invite individuals to submit a proposal for what they would do with it, and just give the building away, you could make that project pencil out. If you took the cost of demolition and added that in as, as an incentive for someone to come in with a proposal for what they want to do with that building, you could make it pencil out. And I don't think it's, it's, so I encourage the property owner to reconsider economic viability within that context. And I will actually, and I don't even know if I can do this or not, but I will offer some of my time pro bono on the side to help with that evaluation. That's what I do as a consultant in my, in my professional life. Not as a commission member, I wouldn't be offering that service, but as, as a citizen of, of Stoughton and someone who believes in these historic properties, I'd be willing to sit down and work on penciling out a project, or looking at options such as community-initiated development to see if there's other options besides. Because I know that the property could pull that demolition, I mean, they could make that decision, which I would encourage. But otherwise, that's the site plan criteria that I would need to see evaluated.
Additional comments by commissioners?
I would just ask Mr. Barnum, what, what landscape, landscaping would meet your criteria? Because it doesn't sound like anything would meet your criteria.
Well, no, like, there are, there are public improvements. And Commissioner Hanna talked about this at the commission meeting where you guys decided to approve demolition, that there are, you can go to communities and find pocket parks where there's investments in sculpture, investments in splash pads, there's investments in, in infrastructure that actually becomes an attraction in and of itself, that will help carry people across that particular parcel as they're strolling and walking the district. Otherwise, with, with, with no activity in this, with no activity on this parcel, and this particular design does not encourage activity, does not encourage use. And what happens is it becomes dead space that people will not walk. I mean, there's a lot of research that shows that that will not draw people across. Now, you can have well-designed pocket parks that, and I can give examples of pocket parks, but there, there's usually significant financial investment in, in some sort of amenity that will attract people to that location for it to work. Otherwise, it becomes dead space. And, and again, I don't know, because again, it's, it's, it's a small space, and I haven't studied it, to tell you what it should be. And that's honestly not my role. But that's why I, I expect that the owner would come to us with a plan and make that case. And then I will evaluate it when I see it. But when I look at this, I see a space that will become unused space. And, and, and as my neighbors and my family talks about, you know, is it going to be a place where litter starts to collect? Is it going to be a place where people just take their dogs to do their business and it just becomes a dumping ground? And that's not what's going to help the downtown. And it's not the kind of precedence that you want to set, because otherwise, you're going to get another property owner, couple blocks down, and there's a number of buildings that are vacant, and they're going to make the same kind of a case, that our parcel will be worth more if the building's not here. And, and that runs completely counter to what the historic district is designed to do.
Additional comments? Is there a motion?
There was.
There was.
Waiting for a vote.
And the motion was?
To approve the plan.
To approve. So the motion before us then is to, is, is to approve the, the plan as submitted. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
Nay.
Motion fails. I would take it from the commission that at a, at a minimum, we're looking for a, as a, as a part of the previous action, we'd be looking for the applicant to bring back a landscape plan, an alternative landscape plan, if not talking about some of the other things. Dennis, the applicant, please. Dennis Kittleson.
Where we've gone from on this is, you know, we've been working on this for quite a while. The comment was brought up about the conceptual plan. So the conceptual plan was put together, brought to the committees as it was needed to be. It was then at one of the meetings that they wanted the city attorney to get involved. So the city attorney got involved. This is private property. Everybody needs to understand that. So we did a conceptual, we brought that here, and then we were told by the city attorney that every plant would have to be specifically named. We don't know what the property has. We don't know what kind of soil it is. We don't know the lighting. We don't know any of that that's going on with it. So we thought, what's the best approach for us to do? The best approach at this point would be get the building taken down. And your comment is right, it sat for over almost 10 years. It's gone through three sheriff sales. So everybody's had ample notification that this building is for sale. I've had our business next to it for 17 years, and if you take 17 years, that, five days a week, eight hours a day, can't look at it anymore. I've called the people that previously owned it to come down and do some work on the building. They've always told me, well, we'll be there, we'll be down, and we'll take care of it. The grass was never mowed, the roof is always in my parking lot, the windows were broke, the painting is terrible. So I had enough. I really have, I've had enough. And so I'm trying to do something that we could do that would be aesthetically pleasing. We presented this because this is simple, straight to the point, until we know exactly what we have for light, how we can amend the soil.
And if we can do it in phases, like was mentioned.
And we're not worried about doing it in phases. And yes, it is a major financial investment. But I have a major financial investment in the city. I've lived here my whole life. My kids are born and raised here. I have a business here. And it's not like I'm looking to have something that's just going to collect litter. I'm trying to have something to where I can, then at my business next door, I want to redo the parking lot, I want to pay my building, I'd like to have a mural put on it, that when they come to the library, if they turn right, or if they go forward, it's something really nice to look at. It's no different than mural that's on the river. So that's kind of what we're looking to do. And now we're back to ground.
What kind of plan do you want? Because it sounds like, that's, I guess that's what I'm a little bit concerned about, that it's going to be, you don't like this and you don't like this. So what are you looking for?
And it's a good question.
On our private property?
You guys keep saying it's private property, and I understand that. But it's private property that you bought full well knowing that it's a, it's a contributing historic structure to a historic district that has very strict guidelines about demolition for a reason. And so you knew what you're getting into. So you can say it's private property, I should be able to do whatever I want with. But the fact is, the fact is, you knew when you bought the property that it was a contributing historic building in a historic district. And if you look at the criteria that were used to even improve the demolition plan, it said that this, that the improvement or the, the resulting site plan itself should have some sort of economic value to it, okay? And so that's, and again, I, without my designing it for you, which is not my job.
I'm going to go to Rodney Seale.
Well, you had, just a second. You had mentioned that a structure or a piece of art draws people in, or a splash pad? We're not looking for a splash.
I know you're not looking for a splash pad, but I was, I was asked, I was asked to provide an example of a pocket park and a pocket park design, or a green space design that adds to the economic vitality of a historic commercial district. And I work with historic commercial districts across the country. And the fact is, is that when research is done on parcels like this, you can't make the case that going from a building to a, a lot actually improves economics. In almost every case, it doesn't. Now, I understand, considering that you own the property adjacent. And removing this particular building is going to improve visibility of your particular building. And it's going to allow you to do more to attract attention to that building. And I understand that, okay? And I empathize with that. But I have to look at the code and the protections that are in place for the historic commercial district. And let's say, for example, you take one of the blocks further down, the 400 block or the 300 block. If I'm counting the numbers correctly, I might be going, I think I'm going the right direction. And you have someone there who says, well, I'm going to buy the building next to mine so that I can take it down, so that I can have better visibility for my building, and I can put a mural on the side of it. And it's, even though it's in the historic district, if, if, if it's been vacant, or if it's been under-maintained or neglected, then, then I should be able to, based on the precedence that your particular property sets. And I apologize, because I understand the, the bind that you're in. But as a commission member, I have to look at the, the precedence and the criteria that are in place. And so what I'm looking for is something that is going to make this be a parcel that will add to just the way the district functions.
Okay, I'm going to ask Rodney. I do believe I came into your office, and I had asked you about the situation of the house. And a permit had been applied for, which we were allowed to go underneath the same name, and everything was submitted to the state of Wisconsin. State of Wisconsin did then their due diligence, and they said it's fine to be taken down. They don't have an issue with it at all being done. Is that correct?
Well, they issued their, their release of it because it's contributing to the district. Yes.
What does it mean they issued their, excuse me, that they, what does it mean when they say they issued their release? Because in all the paperwork I've read, I don't see where the state has said the building should be demolished. I see more where there's been evidence to the fact that this is a contributing structure to the historic district. And it's, and it's, it speaks to the value of the building, historically.
There's a documentation period that has to be expired, 30 days. There has to be an opportunity for the state to document it. They've had that opportunity, and it is a local contributing building. It's not on the national register, and maybe I'm Peggy Varigans here, if somebody wants to speak to somebody more well-versed than myself. But when we have a demolition permit taken out in a district such as this, we have to send it to them to determine whether there's any additional state requirements before demolition could occur.
So the state's been silent?
They issued their letter indicating that it didn't meet any of their criteria that would have prevented it from being demolished.
Okay, I was just going to say, again, from my standpoint, and I believe where we're at right now then is, again, we have a, we have an existing resolution in, in place that allows, that, based on previous action, that allows for the, the potential demolition subject to us approving a, a detailed landscape plan. The action, based on our action this evening, we're not approving the landscape plan. So I believe that's still the condition kind of going forward. So, again, I would encourage folks to, if you've got specific thoughts, to pass them either to Rodney or to the Kittlesons directly. But I think that's, that's where we are at this moment. So with that, I would move on to the next item, which is item number 13, a request by the Redevelopment Authority to discuss a planned development zoning concept for the riverfront redevelopment area. Gary Becker and Peter Schem are here. Gary, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm sure you're familiar with the background on this, but the, the riverfront redevelopment area is a number of parcels that are owned by the Stoughton Redevelopment Authority. And since they're all in public ownership, and we're about to undertake a redevelopment project with a master developer, we asked, the, the RDA requested the city council to initiate a planned development district rezoning process for this area. And so we're here tonight, the council approved that request to initiate the process. This is the pre-application meeting. We don't have anything to present at this point in time. However, this process will be a little different, I think, than most that you've, you're familiar with as we go through this. We just started the planning process with this master developer with a, a three-day charrette over the weekend that was very well attended, and a lot of great ideas that came out of that. But the process that we see moving forward is that the, the developers' architect will take the, I think they ended up with 11 diagrams from the weekend. A lot of great ideas. They got some feedback and comments on those 11 diagrams. In the, in the wrap-up last night, they boiled it down to four, and they kind of took those 11 and combined elements, and now we have four diagrams. So they're going to go back and find the common threads between those four, and then present a concept plan to the RDA about, I think it's June 28th, right, Peter? 28th. And if that goes well, then we expect to be back at your July 11th meeting with a concept plan. The RDA may request some changes, in which case there may, it may be August before we come back. So we'll have to see how that June 28th meeting goes. So we're here just to give that introduction to the project and ask if there are any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions of the commission? Alden Engelberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, so when are you going to bring it back, Gary, as far as action from us regarding changing that?
Well, we're hoping it'll be the July 11th meeting, that we come back with a concept plan that you can react to.
And just as a point of, point of information for my fellow council folks, the demolition contract is on the agenda for tomorrow evening. I will be recommending and will be moving that we table that or defer it for a month. We have an application into the state for matching dollars, but they will not be taking that up until the middle of July. And so I want to make sure we have that fund, again, we have a, we have a demolition contract in place, or a proposal for $330,000 that we have, we have, have to match a part of that. And, and the state portion of that is $150,000. But again, they have not, they will take action on that in about 30 days, correct, Gary?
Yeah, they, they said mid-July. They didn't have a date.
So we'll be taking that, what, from, from the- So we'll be taking that. What, from, from the community's perspective then to my, to the rest of the commission, based on Gary and I communicating and then talking to the, to the demolition contractor, potentially demolition of the Milfab building could start someplace in mid-August then. Again, my assumption is that we would take, take it up at the second meeting, second council meeting in July to approve the contract. And then we're probably looking at something in the neighborhood of 75 to 90 days. So by later on this fall, all of the, the riverfront buildings that you see, the, the Milfab buildings, plus the two pre-engineered buildings that are just located just above that, will then be down. Based on our discussions with the developer, as Gary indicated, this is the first part of the process. Ultimately, the, the developer will then bring in a proposal through the full city process for a first building that could conceivably start next spring. Commissioner Hanna.
Thanks, Alderman Trul. As far as building acquisition, how far along are you guys on some of those other private parcels or?
Right now with the city, we've acquired the Milfab property. And the highway, do you have a red dot? There you go. And then the Highway Trailer Building property, which is that. We're currently negotiating to acquire the former Carpet Warehouse building. And the city currently owns the Public Works Garage site. Now, there are other parcels that have been in discussion and some, I guess, I would say the discussion for negotiation is still in the early stages on the Stoughton Trailer Site and the Tony Roman property just south of that.
They are included in this proposal rezone.
Correct.
They're currently not under city ownership, city or RDA ownership though.
That's correct.
And, and just as clarification, the RFP that went out for the developer effectively was looking to redevelopment between Fourth and Seventh Street. And so this also, as a part of this request coming back from RDA, is it does take into consideration the additional block to Eighth Street. As again, as a part of zoning and planning and the like as it's moving forward. But as we've indicated, we, we control most of the property between Fourth and Seventh, either the Highway Trailer or, or excuse me, either the RDA or the city.
And if I could just add a little piece of information there, the, when the RDA sent out a request for proposal for a master developer, we did receive another proposal, not for this property that the city owns, but a, a proposal from moving out with the request that the city acquire or the RDA acquire those parcels and do a similar deal to Elvinstead Phase One. So we're, we know that there are a number of issues that need to be worked through with that. And so that's why I said we're, we're at the beginning phases and I'm not completely sure that that is going to go all the way through at this point in time. But hopefully in the next 30 days, we'll have some progress or some more information on that.
Commissioner Berman?
Thank you. I see in the, the southwest corner, the very bottom corner there, that particular building is within the boundaries. Now, is there, are there any plans currently for that building or is it too early to say?
Other than, there's almost unanimous, I mean, well, the developer is, is totally set on that being some kind of a, a retail use, like a coffee shop or restaurant, something along those lines.
A retained building that would kind of.
Oh yeah, oh yeah. That definitely will be retained.
Excellent.
And the, the city council's also requested that the blacksmith shop portion of the Highway Trailer Building be retained as well. And so that's another issue that will be very complex to work through, but it's an interesting feature for the site. And we'll see what we can do to have it, make it, turn it into a viable use.
Just as a, as a clarification on that, we are still waiting for an architectural review that was done and, and that report for, for how to best do that. Once we receive that report, we also will then determine, we're anticipating some information on that as to how that part of the building could be saved. As a part of an alternate to the demolition of the Milfab property, we do have an alternate in there to, again, collect and save some of the brick, bricks from that building. We're led to believe that those bricks are a near-perfect match with that blacksmith part of the building. So as we get those reports, we'll be bringing them forward. But again, kind of working our way through the process. Commissioner Hanna, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so currently seeing kind of the, the black line there, the private residences are not part of this planned development. Cool. And then to add to Commissioner Berman's question regarding the building, at the charrette, I know when I was there, you know, other thoughts were keeping that portion of the structure and maybe expansion or, you know, similar aesthetic to build out off of that building. But yeah, there's a strong, strong discussion about using that and keeping it.
That has come up as a part of the, the RDA has also had some initial discussions about the possibility of a fish ladder, again, in the water immediately adjacent, which not only allows fish to be able to, to move up and down over the water here, but also creates a natural kayak area and the like. So some additional activities as a part of this. So these will all be things that will be taken into consideration as, as we move forward.
Yeah, same with Parks Department plan on the other side of the street.
Other questions, Gary?
Keep moving.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
We'll be back.
All right, that concludes item 13. Next item is item 14, request of the City of Stone to amend Appendix B landscape charts and chart, excuse me, and checklists.
There's a public hearing on this because it's proposed changes to the zoning code. Many of the changes are to, to recognize that we're not trying to plant more than a particular, over-populate a particular species of trees within site plans. The, the underline language in both this page and the table indicates the desire to seek that. You'll note also a number of species within here indicate, and varieties. So there are other varieties of those species that may make sense to, or probably make sense to include in the opportunity to build or install in Stoughton. So that's the principal change here. Our former arborist had a strong opinion about trying to create more variety and that's really where this, this came from. And that's why it's here, trying to offer that opportunity.
With that in mind, I will open the public hearing. And are there any registraries, excuse me, registrations? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, additional questions, comments, thoughts? Commissioner Hanna.
Thanks, Alderman Trul. I understand the intent of the 5%. To me, it seems a little confusing, I guess, as far as, you know, there's a lot of sites that only have half a dozen trees. So we got 20%, you know, less than that and there's no way that that could really apply, right? So it seems to be a little misleading and maybe, you know, I understand it's just an encouraging guideline. But I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on that. It, it just seems to be, I don't know where you would have a site that, say a large, you know, for example, I did a plan on an industrial site that requires, you know, there's a certain amount of requirement for climax trees. And you need to hit, you know, a certain amount of points and it's a variety of climax trees and tall trees. And so, you know, you look at that 5%, you know, you could end up having one of each of these trees. And certain sites don't even allow for some of these trees, as some of them are quite sensitive to certain areas. And industrial sites typically aren't some of the best sites to have some of these species or the soils don't match up. You know, so in, in specific sites, it might make sense to have, you know, multiples. But as soon as you add a multiple, then you're increasing your percentage. So, you know, where it probably doesn't make sense to have some of these red oaks on here that are, are very sensitive, you know, to specific soils or things like that. So I would maybe, you know, want to consider either a different wording. I don't know exactly what it should be. But the, the 5% number puts a quantitative value on it that I don't know a site that would even allow for you to only have 5%. You know, it, I mean, even, even if you planted one of each of these trees that is climax trees, you're still not going to get to 5%. So that, that's just my kind of, it's kind of gray as far as that, that it could be worded a little bit differently. You know, encourages, you know, yeah, a diverse planting. No monocultures, things like that, you know, no alleys of, you know, one species planted within, you know, a certain amount. I mean, you could get real specific with it. I don't think we need to take it that far as this is just a guideline. But I think the wording could confuse people, say someone, you know, a developer, a landscape architect or engineers, whoever's preparing a landscape plan, that might kind of throw them off to be like, oh geez, you know, this is, this is pretty strict. Right? So those are my thoughts.
Alderman Bartlett?
Yes, Commissioner Hannah had some good points. I'm not an arborist. I don't know how to maintain the 5% just through the inventory or how are you going to maintain that and check that? Was that number just picked by the, the last arborist we had?
Yeah, the former arborist is the one that represented, suggested this language. Certainly seen, it's not a, not a quantitative amount that's supposed to be tied to anything. Having some different language certainly seems appropriate here to make it more of a suggestion than it is a number.
I guess since we're getting ready to go out again to hire a new arborist, would it delay anything if we go ahead and table this until they have a chance to review this if we're going to change something that would be kind of in their purview? We have a city expert to review it before we would vote on it? Would that?
I'm not an arborist, but I also don't think it harms anything to increase the variety of plant species here and, and to modify that language in that location.
I've got Alderman Engelberger and Commissioner Berman and Kirchman. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess, a couple of questions. The 5% rule, I mean, is it, is it site-specific? Is that what it's intended to be?
That's how these are supposed to be used.
Citywide specific? So we don't get into a problem like the ash, ash trees where we're cutting 40% of the trees out of the city?
This refers to a particular site plan.
And then I guess another question, a couple of other things. When I'm looking at this, I, I had a hard time even seeing where the changes were until I just noticed the underline and crossed off words. But were they redlined before or we just didn't get a redline copy or no?
Oh, just underline and cross-stricken language.
Redline would be good for, to be able to see actually what's happening here. And the other thing is what was just mentioned, I mean, is it, does it hurt to table this until, for a month until we get an arborist? We're not in any hurry for this, are we? Or are we?
We're not, but I, I would suggest that you won't have an arborist up to speed in a month, even if we hire somebody tomorrow to have them.
Hoping we're going to hire an arborist that we don't have to train that's going to actually know something.
Well, I mean, their first thing probably wouldn't be looking at the zoning artist.
Commissioner Berman?
Yeah, I would, thank you. I would just like to echo what Commissioner Hannah brought up. Particularly as someone who's had to go through this process relatively recently, I think as a property owner, if they see that 5%, it might push them toward not having more than one of every kind of tree. And then I think that starts to push your design in a, in a direction we may not necessarily be happy with in the end. I certainly agree with the, the need for diversity. And, and I'm just not sure that this is specifying it like that, I think is going to lead on the part of the property owner, the, the assumption that when it gets to the commission, we're going to be looking at that, even though we're saying, well, it's just kind of a guideline. I think it's going to push them to do certain things in the design phase that we may not necessarily be wanting them to do.
Commissioner Kirchman?
Yeah, I'm, Matt Hannah would be the expert in this category. But it just seems to me that saying something like we encourage diversity and get rid of, just get rid of the 5%, but that's just my comment. But I still think, you know, the, you know, Matt Hannah would be the expert here. If there was something that needed to be reviewed and changed, he would be the one that would know more than anyone here. Thanks.
Commissioner Hannah?
Thanks. Mr. Berman has some expertise in this as well. He's got the background in landscape architecture as well. To maybe offer some suggestion, instead of saying the 5%, you know, I just had something ahead, you know, encourage, you know, on a site, you know, with multiple trees that encourage, you know, more than one variety or even, you know, which, which they could still go, you know, you know, different varieties of sugar maple. So I guess maybe, I don't know how you want to break it up, but, you know, not, not limiting a site to one, you know, one variety of tree or just, you know, planting diversity. And you could even get into outside of tree species. I know tree species is a hot topic because of Emerald Ashbore. But, you know, there are times where we'll see plans that are 100 junipers. It's just kind of hideous in my professional opinion. But, you know, planting diversity is encouraged throughout all categories. And if you want to add another line item specifically to trees, you know, avoiding monocultures or multiple species of trees are encouraged. So I would say that would be a way to go or maybe if that's enough to give you some guidelines to think about.
I, I heard two different directions here. A, a couple of folks, a couple of the council folks have suggested that we're going to have, we bring an arborist on. Do we want to have a, a, a new arborist? Do we want to have some input from their standpoint potentially to, to table it? Or do we want to try and, and wordsmith this? What's your, what's your druthers? Alderman Engelberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I would not want to wordsmith this in committee here or in, with the commission. It's really not our job to do that, this commission. It's more of a job of a committee, a committee or, I don't know. Did this come from the committee, Rodney, or no?
You are the committee. There isn't a committee that reports to you.
My question was, did it come from like the landmark, the Tree Commission or anything like that or no?
Tree Commission.
Okay. So I, I mean, rather than us trying to wordsmith this thing, I would suggest sending it back to the Tree Commission for more discussion and have them send it back to us. Without concerns.
Yep. Commissioner Hannah?
I think that's, I don't think there's any harm in what we have now. So I think we wait. Just us being conscious of seeing plans and where we see, you know, lack of diversity that we make comments on it.
I think, I think you hit the, the major point, which is really we, we as a commission need to be looking for, for the diversity in all the plans that we see as well and be consistent. I guess another comment I would make is, again, knowing city rules, anytime we quantify a number, it becomes either the max or the minimum. And so I, I wholeheartedly encourage some of the suggestions tonight that we change it and talk about other things. Because again, numbers imply, measurement imply, that's what we're going to get. And, and I can just see the first plan that has 20 trees and, on a plan and each one of them is different. And, you know, and someone says, this is what you're making us do. So. Commissioner Berman?
Thank you. My, my wordsmithing brain is not working real fast tonight at this time of the hour. But there might be a way to do it such that we are able to accommodate for the fact that you're going to have small parcels versus large parcel. Parcels such as we could say no more than two or three, depending on what we think is good, of any tree species or 5%, whichever is greater. And that allows you to have accommodation for large, so a large site's going to default to the 5% because they might have enough, the ability to have enough trees that at 5%, they could have four of the, of the same species. Where a small, smaller site would default not to the 5%, they default to the two or three of any particular one species. Because I think there's, there's some, there's some benefit once in a while of clustering a couple of trees. But we can kind of decide whether two or three makes the most sense from a diversity perspective.
Commissioner Kirchman?
I just apologize. I did not know Mr. Berman had a landscape architecture background, so.
No problem.
Go put it to those guys, both of them. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who has seconded, all in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Jose? Close nay? Motion passive, so it will be indefinitely set out there. I think, thank you for the comments, because I'm confident we can pass some of this stuff back, and perhaps when the new arborist comes on.
So is the intent to send it back to the tree commission with those thoughts, or to send it to the tree commission after there's a new forester-arborist on board?
I mean, we probably made the wrong motion. It probably should have been refer back to the tree commission, because you're going to have the same discussion at council, and they're going to try to.
Well, it was moved to table, so I'm just asking if the intent was to send it to the tree commission before it comes back here. We can do that administratively. We'll just, if that's what the hope is.
I think I'd rather the tree commission with the comments from Commissioner Hannah and Berman, so they know why we didn't approve it.
Okay. That's fine. More ayes is fine. I guess there really isn't a rush on it, to be honest.
There really weren't that many changes to the tree, so I guess I'm not that concerned about the new arborists looking at it.
So the bottom line is clarification. We do want to go back to tree commission with some of the comments. Then when we get some comments, we can bring it back off the table for us and take it to council. Okay. Brings future agenda items.
Remember, June 27th will be the joint meeting with the city council. I'm sorry, is it the 27th or the 28th?
27.
27.
27. Is the joint meeting of the Planning Commission Council, where we have the public hearing related to the comprehensive plan, the draft plan, that's the public hearing draft that's out there now.
That's not a vote, correct? Just?
Certainly can be a vote. And the planning commission will ultimately make a recommendation to the council.
Any other items?
There will be, but that's the big one that I want to focus on right now.
Commissioner Hannah.
Yeah, thanks. Is there any sort of timeline that we'll see those documents prior to that meeting?
They're out there now.
They're actually on the website right now.
Great. The public hearing draft is available online.
Right. The comprehensive plan rewrite, final draft, the comprehensive plan rewrite, with links to the maps and other information, and the public hearing notice are available at the City of Stoughton document storage under Planned Commission. And you can see the information for the June 27th meeting. Any other items? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion adjourned.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close nay?
I'm going to set this out.
Stand adjourned. Thank you, folks.